The virtual work session of the Annapolis City Council for Thursday, April Fool's Day, 2021 will be called to order at three o'clock, um, at five o'clock. No, that's my April Fool's Jake. Uh, at this time, would anyone join me for the pledge of allegiance? To get lucky. I pledge.
On allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Of America.
To.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Literally play ball. Season opened up.
It's coming up right Thursday.
No, it's closed because of COVID.
Yeah.
The Nationals aren't playing tonight.
Oh, Baltimore is next Thursday, though, I think. Orioles.
The Brewers are playing today here.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
The first item on the agenda is ID dash fifty-eight dash twenty-one, Juneteenth presentation.
Okay, thank you. If you could bring up Ms. T, Keanu, Jessica, welcome.
Hi, how's everybody doing?
Hey.
Doing good.
Good, thank you. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here. My name is.
I made a couple of calls, but wait a minute.
Thank you, no worries. My name is Jessica Lawrence, and I am a proud member of the Annapolis Juneteenth Planning Board, and thank you all so much for having us. While I'm getting set up, I would like for the team who is on the call to introduce themselves while I share my screen so that we can have a visual with our update for today's presentation.
I guess I can start. Hello, everybody, and thank you so much. I recognize some of you from the press conference we just had, and again, thank you all for being there. My name is Morgan Barnhart. I am a part of the Planning Board and also an organization known as the Freedom Day Foundation, and I really appreciate you guys for having us here today.
Good afternoon. If anyone can hear me, this is Bernay Wallace. Thank you all for being here. I am the Financial Director for the Juneteenth Board, and I am excited about this event.
Hello, hello, hello. My name is Keanu Smith Brown, and honored pleasure to be a part of this team in the Planning Board. I am the Director of Strategy and Government Relations.
Hello, my name is Clayton Northcraft. I am one of the co-founders of the Freedom Day Foundation with Morgan Barnhart and Malak Harris, and we are part of the Annapolis Juneteenth Celebration as well. I'm super, super excited and passionate about this event, and I can't wait to see what we are going to do in the next two months, and I cannot wait to see in ten years what people will be saying about this, this first Annapolis Juneteenth Celebration. Thank you for having me on.
Definitely.
And we cannot move forward until we know that our leader and visionary, Ms. Phyllis T. Adams, is on the call. Ms. T, could you say hello?
Yes, my name is Phyllis T. Adams. I'm the visionary Executive Director of the Annapolis Juneteenth, the first Annapolis Juneteenth Parade and Festival. I'm excited about what is to come, and I, and I can't wait for it all to come to pass, and we're all a part of history in the making in the city of Annapolis.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And again, on behalf of the Annapolis Juneteenth Planning Board, I am very, very honored and pleased to be here with the Annapolis City Council and stakeholders near and far that may be watching this afternoon to share with you information about the first annual, we're, we're hopeful that this will be annual, Juneteenth Celebration. And our agenda for today will be extremely quick. We know we only have a few minutes, so I'm gonna breeze through to allow time for questions and also to allow some of my team members who may want to share thoughts or help answer any questions, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Phyllis T. Adams. But our agenda, we structured our time with you, is to just share about the celebration, talk through some of the events and activities that will be taking place, focus on some of the areas that we think are really important to make this event a success, share with you our target audience, and let you know that, you know, we find value in bringing something like this is powerful to the city of Annapolis, where I grew up, a place that I call home, and then we're gonna share with you how you can stay connected and engage to our work. I apologize in advance for all of the text that's on this slide, but all of it is so important to why we are here today. As many of you may know, Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration that commemorates the end of slavery in the United States. This is a historic time as it marks our country's second Independence Day. This is celebrated all over the country in mainly African-American communities, and this monumental event is mostly unknown to some Americans. So with this in mind, we've set our plans forward to be able to host the city of Annapolis' inaugural Juneteenth Festival and Celebration, and we are so grateful to the council for supporting the parade and the festival with a resolution. But I think it's important to really ground what we're doing in some of our goals and objectives to give you a sense around the why of why we're here. And so most importantly, we want to produce an annual celebration that honors the rich history and memory of enslaved Africans. We want to deepen our community's knowledge of Juneteenth and African-American history through the arts, education, and performance. We aim to bring together a group of diverse stakeholders from all backgrounds and cultures to celebrate freedom and build community right in our hometown. And then we also want to showcase the city of Annapolis as a premier destination for African-American arts, education, history, and culture. We want to make sure that we are creatively expressing the memory, values, and traditions of African peoples in an educational and celebratory way. And I think what is anchoring everything that we're doing, and this is why I love that Ms. T. has this vision, is we want to connect the community to organizations and brands and resources that support underserved youth and families. Now, talk a little bit more about that throughout the next few slides. And again, this is really building on the momentum and current advocacy and struggle for social justice that is happening across the world and right here in our own community. We don't want to miss that opportunity, and we feel as if it all connects. And so now I want to take you through some of the events and activities that will take place during this celebratory weekend. We're gonna kick off Juneteenth with a VIP reception and community awards ceremony. This ceremony is extremely unique. When you think of who Ms. T. is, she's one of our unsung heroes. She's everywhere. She's behind the scenes, making things happen on behalf of our communities. And so we are seeking out and honoring those individuals who are on the ground, leading the work to serve our youth and families, and that's what we're doing. We're giving an opportunity for folks to come together, our sponsors, elected officials, community leaders, to give back and pour into those who are doing the real work. Proceeds from that event, of course, will benefit the festival, but it will also pour into some of the education and youth-led programming that we want to see happen in some of our high-poverty communities across the city of Annapolis and beyond. And then for Juneteenth, we are planning a huge festival and parade. This is going to kick off the festival. This parade will take place to celebrate Juneteenth, this awesome holiday, featuring community-based civic organizations, marching bands, cultural performances, and more. The parade will begin at the city dock with a community prayer and opening remarks from stakeholders and leaders in our community, and then we'll end on the steps of Merlin Hall with a brief ceremony, musical performance, and ringing of the freedom bells. And then this is the really great part about this celebratory weekend. We are hosting the first-of-its-kind, a family music festival and a learning festival. We are very excited that we've just received word that we're going to be hosting a Freedom Row or Freedom Education Village that will highlight the history and education around Juneteenth. Stakeholders and families and young people will be able to experience this in real time, kind of like a living art exhibit. We're very proud about that because this is about educating the community so that folks can experience it and take from it what they need to go on and live their lives in a way that honors where they come from and who they connect with. I'll talk a little bit about the focus areas for the target audience. I know we don't have a lot of time. I'm watching my time right now. You can visit our website. I'll get to that shortly. But of course, we're going to have entertainment. We have some awesome headliners, but I really want to focus on the contributions that African peoples have made to what we call entertainment, culture, history, you name it. All of this will be highlighted at the festival. We'll have community stakeholders and nonprofit organizations sharing information about health, culinary arts, African art. There'll be a cultural marketplace, and there will be youth-led entertainment and programming, and we're very excited to be able to highlight a family and children's zone so that young people can have a great time while learning. And our target audience for this festival, of course, is all ages. It's free, but we know that, you know, for this particular audience, we need all of you all to know that we are hoping to bring in folks to the city of Annapolis to enjoy all of the great things that the city of Annapolis has to offer. We're expecting to be able to have over forty-five hundred people gather safely for this event. Speaking of numbers, we want everyone on this call to know that we are very mindful. This Planning Board recognizes the state that we are in nationally and locally, so we do have a COVID response and contingency plan. Throughout everything that we do, we are planning to adhere to local and state guidelines for outdoor gathering so that we're safe. We're planning to partner with the Anoronto County Health Department as well as city and county agencies to make sure that all regulations are followed. In the event that it is just not safe to gather, we're planning to offer everything that we've shared with you virtually, and we're also planning to do that anyway. If we are able to gather, we have a great partner, which I'll highlight in just a second, who's gonna work with us to make sure that everything that we do for this Juneteenth Celebration can be experienced virtually through streaming platforms. Some of our sponsors to date, of course, we thank you to the city of Annapolis, really excited to partner to be able to make sure that this happens, and then the Freedom Foundation. Now, those folks are on the call right now. We're very grateful for their marketing and organizing and just expertise overall to be part of our Planning Board to get this done. The West End of Annapolis has signed on, and the Maryland Theater for Performing Arts, which is downtown, right in that circle, will be partnering with us to host the VIP reception, and then light it up with AAA, which is Ms. Ms. Adams' business is sponsoring this as well, and then Sanjay Productions has been our partner with helping to secure some of the headlining national acts that families and attendees will be able to experience. This is the end. How can you connect with us? How can you engage with us? Visit our website, contact Ms. Phyllis T. Adams, our Executive Director and visionary, to get more information and find out how we can partner and what you can do to be part of this historic event. I will close before I turn it over to Ms. T. just by saying that what we mentioned, everything that I talked about, we are volunteering our time. Everyone is giving of themselves their resources, their talent, and we need more. We need everyone watching. We need our council members to help us see this through for the community, for a good cause, so that our young people can celebrate and be connected to celebrating freedom and building community. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. T. to share our closing remarks and also offer to the team to share if they would like to do so as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Before I go any further, are there any questions from the, from the older people and the people in the meeting that you may have for us? Okay, since I didn't get an answer, I'm assuming that there are no questions. If any of you would like for us to share our presentation so you'll have a chance to look it over and digest it, okay? Please make sure, can we make sure that Alderman Ross Arnett gets a copy? And we can send it to all of you if you would like, but, so therefore you can look it over and you can see what we're doing. There is so much more that we are doing. You may not see in it. We want to make sure that you know that there is a need. There are a lot of needs that we have, and we want to make sure that if there's services within the city of Annapolis, within the county, within the state, that even if we don't have access to, you may have access to, I would ask that you reach out to the necessary departments to make it happen. And also, we have a sponsorship package. I'm not dwelling on funding, but there is a sponsorship package if anyone is interested in receiving that as well, so that everybody can be a part of this history that's in the making. I especially want to say thank you, Jessica, for that wonderful presentation. We hope that you will all come out and we, and support the reception. It's a, it's gonna be a wonderful evening. It's going to be, we're gonna make sure that it's, because it's outside, we're gonna make sure we're COVID-safe, COVID-friendly with everything that we do. And I especially want to thank each and every one of you that came out on that windy Monday as the, as the podium was blowing over. You came out and you stuck with us through. It was a little chilly out there, but you all came out and supported. That shows that you care. That shows that you're connected to the vision. You've got the vision, and we thank you for it. And also, we can't do this on our own, but together, we can do anything. So I thank you for your support. I thank you for being able to pull together as one to make this dream of reality. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Well, I'll be the first one to just say a big, big thank you. I can just see there's so much talent on the screen, and I know, you know, we, we are lucky to have your energy in the city. I know you're gonna make us proud with this event, and what, what better city to have it in? You know, and a city that's traced its, the Alex Haley story to our doc, and, and I, I love the, the symbolicism of leaving from the waterfront and going to Maryland Hall. I think it's gonna be fantastic, and I really think that Maryland Hall has opened up their doors lately to, to, I believe, be more inclusive than I've, I've seen in a long, long time, and I, and I really, I, I think it's very noticeable in, in a lot of the outreach and programming they're doing these days, so that can only be a good thing, and this is gonna be an off-the-hook event, so I can't wait to be part of it and be there at the first event and enjoy myself. So thank you, and, and learning, and, and learning. So thank you.
I'll, I'll be your windbreaker anytime.
All right.
Thank you. So this concludes our portion, and now you can continue on with your meeting.
Did any of the councilors have some questions or input? Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I hear the plans for this to be an annual event, and so I'm wondering if we don't want to, and we had a discussion about this regarding another event, break open the legislation on our city doc special events and make some amendments there. I have some other amendments in mind, but if we're gonna do this annually, we ought to sanction it annually and get it on everybody's calendar.
Thank you so much.
See any other hands? Well, it looks like the council is speechless. You did such a good job in your presentation. That doesn't happen very often, so we are so grateful again, and I think we can let you, set you free. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Take care.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Have a good day. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, Ms. City Attorney, how you doing, Ashley? Next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is ID dash three hundred thirty-two. Is that right? Or it might be thirty-dash-twenty, update on the comprehensive plan.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for having us back. That was an exciting presentation. I'll look forward to that. But today, we're going to build on the presentation we gave you for guiding principles of the comprehensive plan. Today, we're going to go another layer in depth and talk about the goals of the comprehensive plan. There's a lot to get through, so, and we have more details later on in the presentation if we get to it, but if we could just try to get through all the goals, just write down any questions you have, and we'll come back to it, and if we have time, we'll show you the additional materials that we're developing. So I will turn it over to Eric, who's been working very hard on this presentation.
Thanks. Thanks, Sally. Yeah, good to be back with, with you all. Yeah, I think this, this is gonna seem like, for, for you and for anybody who's watching from home, kind of, I would say, one of the more substantial reveals of what we've been working on with the comprehensive plan. We decided to focus on the goals today. It's really important to make sure the goals are right before we get into all the recommendations and metrics. Although we have started to do that, it's important to refine the goals, make sure they, they cover the whole range of actions that we think we'll want to take on in the next ten to twenty years. So we want it, we want to know if we're on the right track. We're gonna, just gonna go through the first few slides from last time and then get into the goals, and, and of course, we're gonna have some, some questions along the way. We're gonna try our polling and our pop quizzes again, so be, be ready for those. This is the graphic you may remember that kind of speaks to how we think about comprehensive planning. Last time, we talked about the land use element and how to leverage that within the comp plan. We're gonna focus on the element plans today, these kind of specific topics within the comp plan that are summarized here. So this, again, is something we shared last time. It's just important to keep in mind as, as we construct the comprehensive plan, and we're trying to be mindful of this as well. We don't want to put out a plan that is, is, it runs against what people are looking for in, in their city and you as well. You know, we're trying to listen to the greatest degree possible, which brings us to our first pop quiz. Any guesses?
Twenty.
Twenty-five.
Forty-two.
Wow.
All right.
Yeah, we've been really active on, I mean, despite COVID, we've been really trying to meet with as many people as we can. I mean, just this week, I met with the Germantown Homewood Civic Association, and, but I think is their annual meeting. I also met with the Greater Parole Civic Association last night, their leadership team. You know, we, we relish these opportunities, particularly during COVID, to kind of hear about the specifics of neighborhoods in the city. So we're gonna continue that, and we have a, anticipating an environmental review later this month with representatives from the Environmental Commission, ECA, and others. So that's, that's already kind of in the works. On the left here, this is something you may remember, the elements of.
Now it's a start video. Okay, and that key, okay, I hit it.
Alderman, oh, okay.
Okay. So on the left, we have the elements of the comp plan. On the right, just a, a summary of some of the pressing issues that we're dealing with that all kind of connect, they connect all of the elements of the comp plan, really, cross-cutting issues, you know, and, and the guiding principles we developed early on that really become kind of the, the foundation for the comp plan, equity, health, resilience, led to these three city visions, which are the primary structure of the comp plan, and we'll be kind of going into those now. So again, we're, we're gonna just kind of focus on the goals today. There's a handful for each of the elements, and I'm gonna run through them. What we're gonna do is share this presentation with you after this, after today in PDF. We're gonna post it on our comprehensive plan website. It's Annapolis Ahead. If anyone at home just Googles Annapolis Ahead, it'll, it'll take you to that. It's on our planning and zoning website, and we're gonna provide a way for people to, to provide feedback to what we post there. So these are the, the things that we think about when we think about thriving city, you know, for this comprehensive plan. These are the, the five principles that we, we felt are most indicative of the thriving city, and, and will guide our goals and recommendations and metrics. We wanted to use this moment to do our first polling question. Julian, if you're there, could you activate that?
Says we're not allowed to vote, by the way, so if you're looking for interaction.
Were we supposed to be able to click on our three answers?
Yeah, I don't see them on my screen, but if you guys see them on yours, that's.
Now it's working.
Now we're good.
Okay.
Can you bring it back up? Because it disappeared for me. All right, I got it. I got it.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to see. I wanted to see it for myself. That's all. Let me go back. Let me go back to that. Everybody get their answers in? They're all good answers, by the way. Interesting. Okay. There you go. Thank you for that. Let me get back to the presentation. So that's a good tie-in to the, you know, when we think about the thriving city, you know, we're starting with thinking about our most vulnerable populations with this comp plan. We're using the CDC's Social Vulnerability Index, which uses these criteria to determine socially vulnerable populations. You could see in the United States, the blue areas are the most vulnerable populations based on these criteria. And then in our city, this is how it breaks out, where the dark blue areas are most vulnerable based on that methodology. And we'll see later in the presentation how this can become a foundation for other mapping to understand where resources are and where we should potentially channel our investments. So when we talk about municipal growth, this is the first element we're going to talk about. First question really is where and how do we want to grow? And we talked about this a bit in the last presentation. It will happen. The question is, how can we be proactive in managing it? I wanted to highlight this project on Upper West Street to show what we think is a project that is a model. You know, it's a new housing development that's under construction near Gibraltar and West Street. It's forty moderately priced dwelling units. It's adjacent to the Monarch Academy School. It's going to be offering a trail connection to West Street as part of the project. We got an intersection improvement at Gibraltar and West Streets. We could highlight the playground here that they're adding as part of their adequate public facilities. You know, and so we want other projects to do this, you know, to basically augment, enhance our city with their contributions. And we want to set a high standard here for what type of infill growth we seek. And I mentioned this the last time we met, that mixed-use development is something that we don't see enough of in this city. It is a fiscal win for the city. This is an example from Asheville. I mean, you could, you can imagine in Annapolis, it's a, you know, Asheville's a different sized city, but the lessons are the same. And the basic takeaway is that there's a lot to be gained by situating compatible uses closer to each other. And that's something that we're looking at in terms of how we grow, and it's going to require some changes to zoning to incentivize that. And so the goals that we've identified at this point for municipal growth, I'll just go ahead and read them. It's a little, like, I may not need to, but just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Growth in the number of households will prioritize increasing workforce, affordable housing, the creation of good-paying jobs, and the fiscal strength of the city. Goal two, within the designated growth area, promote exceptional development that addresses the city's land use, housing, and natural resource protection goals. And by growth area, we mean the few areas at the edge of the city where we could potentially annex to enlarge the city. There's very few of these places remaining, but there are some, and we should leverage those. Goal three, grow in a way that assures public facilities and infrastructure remain adequately sized and equipped to deliver exceptional service to existing residents, institutions, and businesses. And this was a big theme of our Forest Drive Eastport Sector Study Task Force. Goal four, prioritize growth through strategic infill development opportunities that will better connect residents to retail services and amenities. And that's, you know, again, that's sort of this idea of compact and connected development where we can ideally cut back on short trips that people make in their car and therefore thereby cut back on traffic that is a nuisance at times in the city. Next element is land use. Kind of starts by understanding where a zoning code exists. You know, it's a thirty-one district map that has just kind of grown over the years. And a lot of these are very specific to very specific needs that have come up over the years. And we want to simplify this and make it more predictable and improve how development happens in the city. And we think the kernel of change is in things that we're already doing pretty well in the city. These are the four of the zones in the city that constitute what we think of as a performance-based approach to zoning, meaning they have guidelines that tell us how development should perform, what kind of quality it should deliver. It gives us a better sense of what we're going to get. They're more predictable, and we think that more of the city could be based on this model. And so when we look at our future land use map, that is one of the main tools for showing where development, what type of development should happen, where. We're highlighting these areas in brown in the map on the right as places where mixed use would make sense, where residential and retail or office or institutions could coexist closely to each other in a way that would really improve how we get around and service and efficiencies in all kinds of ways for infrastructure and energy use and et cetera. So that's kind of the direction we're moving in at this point. And I should say, I mean, some of these brown areas are already mixed use, so Inter-West Street being a prime example of that. The goals for land use are these. Goal one, simplify the zoning code by transitioning commercial, professional, and some residential districts to form-based, mixed-use zoning to spur redevelopment that is more predictable, context-sensitive, and fiscally beneficial to the city. Goal two, support and sustain the expansion of businesses and private sector employment and the revitalization of tourism sector, of the tourism sector, including restaurants and retail, which has been adversely impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. There's some runoff sentences that we're going to try to improve on here. Goal three, protect and secure the historic resource values of downtown Annapolis while promoting both its economic vitality and its role as the central civic gathering space for the city's residents. Goal four, guide infill redevelopment into arrangements that complement the neighborhoods where they are located. Goal five, promote the improvement and reinvestment in vacant or underutilized parcels. And this could be improve the environmental value of some of these that may not be ideal for development. Goal six, identify zoning language adjustments to the residential districts that will help to bring about more housing options for workforce and middle-income residents. So that brings us to housing. In our next pop quiz, over the last ten years, how many permits were issued for single-family dwelling units versus multifamily dwelling units? Any ideas? We're talking, each one of these is over a hundred. And single family also refers to significant renovations, basically, of existing homes. Any ideas?
Too many and not enough.
That's right. This is what we've found over the last ten years in looking at our permits for the city. Not a lot of multifamily dwelling units. And I should say, by multifamily, we're talking about simply duplexes or triplexes or fourplexes. These are not necessarily larger apartment complexes, but we don't see many of those, what some people call, you know, light increases in density. And historically, those have existed here in Annapolis pretty well. So this is the map that we've kind of used to understand where permit activity has happened over the last ten years, where the yellow stars are all the single-family dwelling permits. The red ones are the new community buildings, commercial, excuse me, commercial buildings. The few orange are the multifamily. And so you could see the majority of those are in the Clay Street area at O'Bury Courts, which is a pretty big success in terms of redevelopment, in my opinion. And then there's some green that are maritime-related permits, maybe docks in some cases. You know, this is a slide I think we may have showed in the past. It sort of just highlights the area of focus for our housing goals and recommendations, this idea that we have a pretty large gap between housing for the lowest-income residents of the city and the wealthiest residents of the city, and that there is a huge need for this type of housing that is appropriate for somebody earning eighty to a hundred twenty percent of the area median income. This is a graphic that's been used all over. Every city in the country has this problem. So we have examples of missing middle in the city, and we're trying to find ways of creating more of them. So the housing goals are these. Goal one, produce a supply of affordable rental and ownership housing in order to meet current and projected needs. Pretty straightforward. Preserve the supply of quality housing for low-income and workforce households. As that gets into sort of, there are naturally occurring affordable houses in this city that I think we want to do a better job of tracking in the future. Goal three, plan for changing housing needs over time in relation to both the production of new housing and preservation of existing units. Goal four, increase the supply and diversity of housing types and the locations where such housing can be compatibly provided to best facilitate housing that addresses the particular needs of the city's households by, for example, age, income, disability, and household size. Long sentence, but that kind of gets to this idea of having more housing options for people who want to move to the city, who may not need a big house, they just need a house they can afford. Or somebody who's looking to move out of public housing into a starter home. More of those types of housing would be ideal. And so then we kind of get into our second broad section of the comp plan, the functional city. We were just talking about the thriving city. Now we're in the functional city, and the principles that guide that are these. And so we're going to have our next polling question here. Julian could activate that. The elements that we're talking about in the functional city are transportation, community facilities, and arts and culture. And so these are the options again. No wrong answers again? I guess Julian, when you get, when you said like you have nine, I guess that's the.
Seeing all of our faces in two different screens is starting to.
We good, Julian? Okay. I know it's tough. It's. I thought of asking for your top five here. It's tough to prioritize, but.
How would we know if we voted or not? I thought I did.
If you hit submit, they shouldn't have, I think. That would be the, but. We could probably go ahead if. Okay. All right. Good to see. You didn't fall for my parking question, my parking answer here. Okay. All right. That was the red hearing. Okay, so, you know, transportation, challenging topic for the city. It starts with this image, you know, our fragmented bike network. I mean, I think, I think hopefully you all recognize the, we can only go up from here. It's in a sad state. And, you know, one thing I spent a lot of time talking to residents about is that when we talk about improving our bike network, it's not just for people that want to ride a bike. It's really for everybody. I mean, people who primarily drive and worry about congestion or traffic or accidents. You know, one of the best ways to solve that problem is by making it safer and easier for people to walk and ride if they choose to do so. And we are, obviously, we live on a peninsula. We're constrained. We're not widening our roads. We need to find better options for people to get around if they're able to do so. And, you know, we're not asking people to get out of their cars, but providing safe and better ways to get around by bike is, especially for a tourism city where people come to visit and get out of their cars. And, you know, it's a, it should be part of our brand to be a highly bikable city, and that would help residents as well. So I would just say, you know, we're not going to be able to meet a lot of our other goals unless we have a highly functioning bike system for trying to meet climate goals and affordable housing. This is certainly part of that equation. Just anecdotally, I would just say, we met with St. John's College recently to bring them on board as a partner for the work we're doing with our bike network. And what they told us was they can't, they can't, they're trying to diversify their faculty, and they can't draw candidates because they can't afford to live in Annapolis. But with an expanded bike network, that was probably the best way for them to sort of say, hey, you could reach more places by bike. You can live, you can live in parole. You can live in, along Bay Ridge Avenue. You can get places easier by bike. And so that kind of sold them on the idea, and they're going to be a partner with us on this. The pedestrian map isn't much better. The pedestrian map isn't, isn't much better. I mean, it shows the sort of islands of activity in the city where we know it's possible to be a pedestrian safely and a lot of disconnect in between along our major arterial streets. So that's something we want to improve on. And then the, the crescendo here is, is our crash data and really showing where the, the accidents and fatalities have happened is, is pretty telling and just kind of points us to where the improvements need to be. And I'm happy to say that, you know, we, we've been working closely with Intermodal County Transportation on the Forest Drive Task Force. And they're, they've been able to identify funding for the next fiscal year that'll help them to make improvements to some of the places along Forest Drive that are real hotspots. So I think that's something positive. So from that, you know, I should say, we're, we're kind of showing the most compelling images of our analysis here. We, we've done a lot of other analysis. These are the images that we thought kind of tell the story best and kind of led to these goals. So goal one, shift the mix of mobility investments towards active modes, meaning biking and walking, public transit, micro mobility, ride sharing, and the support for telework options to double the usage of these modes by 2040. Goal two, build a policy environment in Annapolis that is mode neutral, equitable, and oriented to safety. Goal three, transportation will take a leadership role in creating a greener and healthier Annapolis to sustain the economic, environmental, and societal quality of the city. Goal four, expand partnerships with Intermodal County, MDOT, SHA, NSA, Annapolis, which is the Navy, National Park Service, St. John's College, HACA, local businesses and others to improve mobility and connectivity for residents and visitors alike. And we are definitely doing a lot of that right now. So community facilities, parks are the primary example of that, but that, that includes other types of public institutions. What percentage of residents are currently within a 10-minute walk or a quarter mile of a park? Give you a hint, it's, it's pretty high up there. It's not a hundred percent, but it's better than a lot of other places.
Seventy-five?
Close enough, seventy-three. This is based on the Trust for Public Lands Park Serve methodology, which is pretty widely used around the country. And.
We're up, star for you.
Yeah, for prices right rules, I just blew it anyway. So whoever bet $1 won that.
One of the big realizations we had, there's a lot of energy in the city around bikeways. There's a lot of energy in the city around conservation. And there's also a lot of energy around park development and programming. And those things are sort of operating in their universes where we're trying to connect those. And I think ultimately having a map, this is just a preliminary look at what connecting all those things might be, is really a goal for us, unifying that system so people don't have to find the information in multiple places. This kind of gets at, that question about access to parks equity. A lot going on here, but the, the main thing to see is that with this yellow line, we're drawing a quarter mile radius from our mini parks. These are parks that are, I think, under a quarter acre in size. The orange lines are a half mile radius from our neighborhood playgrounds, which are a half acre to an acre. And then the big red line is a mile radius from our community playfields, which would be Trucksden Park, Ellenmoyer, and the Germantown complex, I believe. And I guess Bates also qualifies as that. So the city's pretty well covered in the community playfields. Not so much in the neighborhood playgrounds where you can see there's a large gap, you know, the southern part of the city. And then we have some, some areas that aren't even within a quarter mile of a, of a mini park. So this kind of, and then we're overlaying this on that social vulnerability map so we can kind of get a sense of where those populations are. And we're going to, you know, we, I think we shared this last time. It's part, it's part of our updated adequate public facilities code. So it's important to keep in mind, you know, equitable waterfront access is, is a huge goal. We're doing a lot on that right now. I'm sure many of you are aware of all these projects. And there's active planning going on at Hawkins Cove, at Wells Cove. There's a park rehabilitation on College Creek and some other planning efforts. We have the Crab Facility in the works. And then Bembi Beach is, is going to get a dedicated public beach as part of a current project under review right now, or potentially a larger park there. So we are looking for every opportunity we can to expand public access to the waterfront and really build opportunities. So the goals then become, goal one, merge Annapolis' parks and recreation system with its evolving network of conservation areas and trails to create a comprehensive greenway system. Goal two, expand parks facilities strategically to achieve equitable access for all, where each resident is no more than a quarter mile from a mini park, a half mile from a neighborhood park, or a one mile from a community playfield. Goal three, prioritize equitable waterfront access by creating new parks on existing city-owned waterfront, enhancing existing waterfront parks, and working with public and private partners to activate additional waterfront open spaces for public use. Goal four, excuse me, expand the operations budget for parks and recreation system to reach more residents, expand program offerings, activate underutilized resources, and improve maintenance. And I would just say for this one, obviously we're, we have a constrained budget in the future, but we're, we're going to be making a lot of recommendations about how there are other ways of raising revenue for the park system that we think we could leverage concessions, private fundraising, and, and other tools. And I think we could be doing more of that. Goal five, leverage opportunities for expanded recreational use of Waterworks Park through improved bike and pedestrian connections, new and enhanced access points, new programming, expanded parking options, and activation of underutilized structures such as the, the historic building at Water, Waterworks Park, which it, you know, could be a place within the park. And that's one example of a way the city could be generating more revenue by activating a place like that. So obviously Waterworks is a huge opportunity. And I should say, we're working with dedicated volunteers from mid-Atlantic off-road enthusiasts, enthusiasts to, to activate more trailheads at Waterworks Park. And just the, the volunteer network has been instrumental over there. So for arts and culture, this is the last section of our functional city section. And, you know, it's important to situate here. We, we wanted to make a point that arts and culture is not just something we can have when we're financially solvent, but, but something that always has to be here. You know, it's part of our city's DNA and we have to be thinking about opportunities whenever we can. So the arts district is one of those primary tools that we have to expand our creative economy and opportunities for artists and artist entrepreneurs. And this is their vision to expand the arts district. You know, I know this has to be discussed more at the council level, but it's, we think it's a good idea. And in this map, the green areas are our existing arts district and the orange signify the expanded arts district area. We, we're working with, to support Maryland Hall recently, they're going to be hearing very soon about a national endowment for the arts grant that would allow them to do a campus master plan as well as a regional arts master plan. So we're supporting them on that. We're, we're a city that has generated tremendous amount of, of revenue through heritage tourism. And we, we want this comp plan to identify opportunities for expanded heritage tourism and a more inclusive, equitable narrative for the city. You know, this is just one example of a piece that was done for parole a few years ago through Preservation Maryland and a lot of other partners. We think there's, well, there's obviously a lot of work already happening at the city dock. There's stories to be told that could really be expanding how we tell the Annapolis story. And we're going to be putting in some recommendations for this in the comprehensive plan. And then finally, you know, in terms of our analysis, you know, we're coming through an unprecedented time where our downtown historic district was very much transformed to adapt to COVID and help to keep small businesses afloat. And, and, you know, we've, we've transfigured our streets and public spaces, you know, to really, to do what we could. And I think as we move forward, we want to be proactive in thinking about how we do this in the future, in terms of temporary uses, what we could do to improve the historic district's functionality in terms of infrastructure. And, you know, needless to say, the city dock project will be transformative and that's going to be a big part of it. Goal one for this chapter, this element is adopt an approach to historic and cultural preservation that is inclusive and equitable and fully acknowledges the diversity of cultures that have created the Annapolis of today. Goal two, expand the reach of the Annapolis Arts District and growth of the creative economy through support for district expansion, public realm enhancements, programming, and institutional partnerships. Goal three, expand the capacity of the Art in Public Places Commission to increase event programming, artist opportunities, placemaking initiatives, and other public realm enhancements. And we, we are working with them on a grant right now to activate part of the outdoor space around the Stanton Center through a, a grant program from Bloomberg Foundation called Asphalt Art, which I think would be great. And it's, I think we have a great candidate in the Stanton Center. Goal four, enhance the sustainability of the historic district through proactive improvements to infrastructure, context-sensitive guidelines for temporary uses, and code updates to better leverage the upper floors of buildings. All right, so if you're still with, with me, this is the last section of, of the presentation, adaptive city. Here we're talking about resilience. That's really kind of the, the primary theme. All of these principles really tie back to that. And we have two elements to talk about. So our last polling question, if you may, Julian. So we probably have another 10 minutes and then we can have time for questions. Sorry, thank you for. See a clear, a clear winner here. All right. Thanks for going along with this. You know, we're, we're really, I mean, needless to say, we're trying to address all of these things. It's a, you know, we're sort of at a, obviously a little bit of existential crisis here with climate change affecting the city as it is. So the sensitive areas element that's mandated by the state is traditionally only focused on coastal areas and flood zones. We're taking a different approach with this comp plan and really treating the entire city as a sensitive area. And this doesn't mean that the whole city is, is susceptible to flooding. We're looking at broader sensitivities that we're facing as a result of climate change. So this, this is kind of where we start. I mean, the sea level rise projection that NOAA provides shows us that in 2040, the extreme sea level rise would be almost two and a half feet. A high would be around two foot. These are projections. We're trying to understand, it's very challenging to come up with exact numbers, but you can see where that, the impact is, is clearly at the city dock and parts of Eastport. And then as you get up into Spock Creek and some areas there. There are a few other places around the city, but we're trying to expand how we think about the sensitivity of climate change. And by looking at our tree canopy, we can kind of get to a better sort of citywide understanding. You know, this is data that we've received recently through a study conducted by the University of Vermont that other folks from our city staff have coordinated, our city arborist and our deputy city manager for resilience. And, you know, this is, this is pretty telling. You know, we're, we're losing tree canopy in the city. It's something that we want to be proactive in reversing. We've already started to have conversations about how to create programs that would allow us to plant more trees in places where we have heat islands, essentially where we have less tree canopy, more impervious coverage. You know, it's, we're losing, according to this study, we're losing more canopy in residential areas. In some ways, those are places where we have to rely on partnerships with homeowners and property owners to do more planting. But we can also be proactive in the public realm with street tree planting. And, and we're in the midst of updating our, our street tree master plan from 1997. And so we're, we're going to be looking at ways of prioritizing certain areas for new street tree planting and guidelines for allowing those to survive. That's one of the most challenging aspects of tree planting in the public realm. And so this is just, this is a citywide issue and it's, it's something that I think we're trying to be proactive on. There's pretty, pretty convincing data out there that really correlates health outcomes to tree canopy. And, and it's not hard to understand if you understand the value of trees as to our air quality, the shade they provide, temperature change that's with, you know, within the canopy area, it sometimes creates a microclimate. So this map here is kind of the next step. You know, it's looking at our impervious coverage in the city. It's overlaid on top of our social vulnerability map. We're not necessarily correlating impervious coverage to social vulnerability yet, but we wanted to understand if there was a correlation there. we wanted to understand if there was a correlation there. Really what we'd like to do, and this will be a recommendation, is get a much more nuanced understanding of surface temperature in the city. And this is a, something that NOAA conducts with cities across the country. And I think we could be a good candidate for that. And so it just, it just requires more, more, more research. But yeah, there's, there's impervious coverage all over the city that could be broken up and, and greened and provide more stormwater management capacity. So our, our sensitive area goals are these. Develop a comprehensive and equitable approach to resilience that addresses places impacted by climate change beyond flood zones and socially vulnerable communities that may be disproportionately impacted by climate events. And I know that our deputy director of sustainability, Jackie Guild, is focusing on these resilience hubs. These are places where we know there's disproportionate impact from climate change. It could be more self-sustaining energy wise. And that's one example of how that could work. Goal two, expand the city's tree canopy by prioritizing planting within heat islands and within the communities most impacted by the heat islands. Goal three, reinforce vulnerable shoreline areas through the application of green infrastructure, gray infrastructure when critically necessary and by addressing the root causes of soil erosion and natural landscape degradation. So if anybody's hiked Truxton Park, that's probably one of the best examples of a place where we're losing soil pretty rapidly. And where, you know, where the roots of the trees are exposed. And that's kind of high on our list for a place to address. Goal four, promote a coordinated approach to food access that ensures all residents have access to healthy foods and particularly foods which are locally or regionally harvested. I know that's another initiative that Jackie Guild is working on. Goal five, expand the city's biodiversity through a coordinated approach that combines conservation of natural assets, preservation of existing tree canopy, new planting strategies and stewardship of protected areas. And so I've touched on some of this. In a moment, I'll share the Greenway work that's being done to amp up where conservation can happen in the city. And I talked about planting strategies and, you know, there, there are opportunities for increased stewardship too. And there's, the county has a great program and it's Watershed Stewards Academy. Perhaps we could do something that's more focused on the city beyond just watershed stewardship. But goal six, adopt a comprehensive approach to minimizing the city's carbon footprint that includes vehicle emissions reductions, clean energy generation, green building standards, carbon capture and other strategies for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So this is where we would talk about electric vehicles and transitioning our fleet over time, opportunities for new renewable energy generation. I mean, we obviously have a massive solar farm in the city already, figuring out ways of leveraging that and look, looking at our green building standards. It's already in the code, but are due up for a review and carbon capture. One of the primary ways of thinking about that is, is trees, you know, and their ability to, to do more for us. So our last element here, thank you for getting through this, water resources. Last pop quiz, how many miles of pipe does the city currently manage to deliver drinking water to residents? Any guesses?
Seventy.
Five hundred.
Between. It's a lot. The city, the city did a, a water and sewer plan in 2019 that is, is pretty valuable guide, guidance for us as we move forward. The water resources element, it's, it's, just to clarify what it refers to, it's, it's both our water infrastructure, our, our hard infrastructure, the pipes that deliver us drinking water and take our wastewater away. But it's also our soft infrastructure and our, our waterways, our shoreline and stormwater mitigation strategies, you know, to make sure that we're moving less runoff into our creeks and streams. So, you know, this is, um, this is one aspect of, of water resources here. This comes directly from that water and sewer plan. And then the other side is, is this Greenway expansion idea that I referenced. You know, this is a, is a great initiative that the Annapolis Conservancy Board took on. They, they included a lot of other folks. They created a survey that looked at opportunities for additional conservation in the city. And, and a lot of these opportunities are understandably near waterways where runoff could be filtered before it hits the creek. These are places that could support habitat, trails and, and really provide shoreline protection. In some cases, they connect to existing parks, their benefits to neighborhoods, increase property values, et cetera. So what we've been doing is mapping them. We, we, we received the data from the survey. There were about a hundred recommendations for conservation easements. We've been working with that data, moving some of the recommendations so they align with property lines to the extent they exist. It's a little bit more efficient as we try to think about actually conserving those areas. And we developed this monster database where we have every one of those recommendations catalogued by what watershed it is on and what, within. So these, you know, the top few, it's hard to see, but these are Back Creek. And then there's Chase Pond is a place that I wasn't familiar with. It's in Annapolis, Church Creek, College Creek and so forth. This is just a snippet from our, our chart database. But, you know, we're looking at the wards that these places are in. Conflict is something we have to fill out, but essentially this would be if these conservation easements, conservation opportunities are within developable areas. Are they in the zoning districts that are essentially developable? That would signify a conflict. It doesn't mean that we won't try to conserve it, but it just means that there might be another interest at play. Type of property, private, HOA, public, et cetera. Whether it's vacant or not, contiguous with conservation or contiguous with parkland? Is it in the critical area? Is it a flood zone? What watershed again? Does it have trail access currently? Easy potential trail access, water access? And then people provide survey justifications in their notes. And so the idea here is to ultimately come to a methodology where we can prioritize these conservation areas to become easements and actually expand our park system, our Greenway system. And so that's, that's really where we're moving and really happy with the progress we've been making. So our last set of goals. Goal one, expand access and awareness of natural stormwater management best practices through community partnerships, a public information campaign and small business and minority hiring. Goal two, dramatically reduce the city's high volume of stormwater runoff using a coordinated arsenal of tactics, including conservation, removal of impervious cover, stormwater retrofits, changes to the site development code and adequate public facilities requirements and other measures. And, you know, a lot of this is already happening. The trick is figuring out where we could be doing things better. You know, the city is already mandated to do additional 20% treatment of our impervious coverage through our MS4 permit with the EPA. And, and so there are a lot of places that are already being treated, but there's a lot of parking lots in the city that could be addressed. There's, there's more opportunities. So we're just trying, in our recommendations, we're going to be trying to be more specific here. Utilize an equity-driven approach to improving water quality within the city's creeks that prioritizes investments based on community need and environmental justice. And, you know, College Creek would be an example of that, or some of the further reaches of Spock Hawkins Cove, for example, where we're already working. Ensure that the city's water supply is protected, adequate in volume to supply future projected needs, regularly monitored for quality and has the necessary infrastructure to be delivered without failure. You know, reading our 2019 Water and Sewer Plan, we are very much moving in this direction. We have more than enough water for our needs. We, we have the systems in place to do everything here, but we just need to be mindful of it moving forward. Goal five, establish a proactive approach to managing wastewater infrastructure that mitigates pipe and pump failure, backups to overflows and integrates new technology when available. And, and again, this is from our 2019 plan. We, we are doing well in this category, but we just need to be keeping a proactive approach to it. So last slide, just to kind of share where we are with the schedule. What we'd like to do in May is release a more substantial document that includes our metrics and recommendations that go along with all of these goals. And that's really where I think people, you know, in the community will be able to see, you know, how is this comp plan going to affect my community, the city at large? You know, it's the devils in the details. And we want to get these goals right, but we're also moving on to metrics and recommendations. And, you know, there's more than enough time in my view to have input on this comprehensive plan. We just want to be able to put out content to, to city councils, to the planning commission, to the general public that can get feedback and help us refine what we have. And so the exact format of what we provide in May is still being worked out, but I think we're going to have a, a series of presentations to walk people through the material. And then we're going to have a review period and, and then we're going to take all these comments we receive to really help get to a final comprehensive plan. When it gets adopted is, is still a question mark, but that's, we're, we're trying to keep moving on this thing. So.
Right. So we're, we're not rushing it, but we want to keep moving, want to keep getting content out so people have something to react to. And we really will need feedback on the, the performance metrics, which will show how we are accomplishing these goals. So we have more, but let's pause because that might be enough for one day. And we, we're happy to come back anytime, but we're happy to take some questions now.
Amazing amount of work that went into that. Fantastic. I'm going to go through the hands I saw go up. That's a little round of applause for you guys. Thank you. The hands I saw go up were Alderman Pindell Charles, Alderman Shandermeyer, Alderman Savage and Alderman Gueye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you so very much. This was excellent. I have one really burning question here. Can you go back to the slide? Goal three on land use.
Is this?
Yes. Yeah, that's the one. I'm concerned about because in the 2009 comp plan, there was a heavy emphasis on preserve and enhance community character. And goal three indicates protect and secure the historic resource values of downtown Annapolis while promoting both its economic vitality and its role as a central civic gathering place for the city's residents. I have no problem with that. But there was included in 2009, a heavy emphasis on other parts of the city that had historic resource value as well. Is, are we only concentrating on downtown when it comes to historic resource value? Should that not be placed within the land use component of what you have here? Because that was the primary thing within the 2009 comp plan. It was preserve and enhance community character. And I didn't see that anywhere. And that's maybe the only place I can see it, but I think there should be a spot for that. And it should not be just downtown. It should encompass the whole city like 2009.
Great point. Great point. I, I agree that, that should be here.
Thank you.
Yes.
Alderman Shandermeyer. You're on mute. You're on mute, Alderman Shandermeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lashinsky, for your presentation. Could you go back to your slide on the, the housing affordability and available stock?
Let's see.
I think it's the one 2009, I believe.
Okay, this guy.
Yeah. So I want everybody to take note of that missing middle housing block. And the thing that is used to fill it is multi-family zones. I think it's a very telling thing that the two youngest older persons on this council are having difficulty or do not have the ability to buy in this city. And I think if we go back to that question and answer of a single family versus multi-family permit, that is a very big reason why. And if we want to pay more than lip service to affordable housing, that is something we're going to have to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to the planning and zoning staff and everybody involved in this. Incredible amount of work that we put into this and a lot of detail. To be frank, you know, I think it'd be good to get this ahead of time in the future because it's really too much to go, to, to just comment on the fly here. But so, and I want, so a couple of comments. On the water access map, I'd suggest adding the South Annapolis shot center because I know that was, public water access was a condition, albeit weakly worded in their development. So I know that's something people are concerned about. But the bigger questions I have or comments have to do with, when you're talking about growth and, and infill development, because I think we do need to at some point spend some more time about talking about what growth, talking about growth in general, but also what exactly is meant by it. I mean, is it growing wider? Is it growing now? Is it growing up or, or is it redevelopment or combination of all these? Because I think they all have pros and cons and all of their own impacts. And then, you know, the one thing I did hear a lot about was infill, but I do have concerns about infill development because infill development means you have to clear forests or, or build on open space, which I don't think is ideal and often contradicts with some of our other goals. I mean, in some cases, it, it, I think it, it may make sense, but in others, it certainly doesn't because it could impact our economics and recreational opportunities if we do, if it does lead to any kind of environmental degradation. So I, I personally like to see a lot more focus given to some redevelopment. You know, we have plenty of areas in the city, I think, that need and are begging for some kind of redevelopment, whether, whether it be horizontal or, or vertical redevelopment. Anyway, my ward is on the edge. I think we do have some infill opportunities. And again, some of them, I think makes sense, but some of them are right on the water's edge, have low line elevation. Those really, I don't think are the areas we want to guide development in light of climate change and some of these other concerns that we have for sea level rise. But that all kind of gets to the, the issue of synergy between the goal areas. Cause I think that really needs to be thought out more. And this is even comments I've had with the, the previous comp plan where we have, for example, I think the wrong kind of growth, wrong kind of infill really work against some of the environmental goals we, that you laid. really work against some of the environmental goals that you laid out. So, how do we strive for more of that synergy? You know, another good example is the tree canopy goal. And that was, again, in the previous Comp Plan. And, you know, it outlines some very general policy recommendations such as reforestation or, you know, planting more trees. But really, we've still experienced forest loss since that. And I think some more, I don't know, I think some more actual policy recommendations that can help implement these goals would be ideal because tree planties are not going to cut it. We need to look at more protecting existing forest and habitat, which I think is, you know, including the Greenway Plan is certainly going to be a huge step in that direction. So, but I think the implementation is going to be really one of the big questions in all of this. My last comment has to do with just single-family versus multi-family housing. I know people are really hating on single-family dwelling units, but I think what we need to keep in mind is that there are constraints that we have to grow. You know, we're on peninsulas. We can't just build roads. I think we need, we don't quite have the multimodal transit that we, I think, all of us want in terms of pedestrian, biking, better bus system. And, you know, more of that growth, of multi-family growth, means we need more roads for all the additional cars. We need more school capacity, which we don't have currently. We need more police and fire, which are incredible burden on our budget as we're learning with the pension costs for fire, not to mention the environmental degradation. So, I think that's one key, I think, piece, I think, is missing from a lot of this is the infrastructure improvements that we need. It shouldn't just be about growth, growth, growth without the adequate infrastructure because we're the ones who often hear about these complaints about traffic or water pollution, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's it. Overall, I think, good, good start. I'd really like to get into some of the details, perhaps in the committee meetings.
Yeah, I believe that is our plan, is to come to the committees and work out the appropriate goals and recommendations at the committee level. So, thank you for those comments.
Alderman Gay was next, then Alderman Arnett.
Thanks. I appreciate this. I thought it was a very good presentation. And, you know, so I'm just glad that we agree on a lot of the things in terms of growth and development. A couple of points that I just wanted to make. I don't think we have enough land to do some of the things that we want to do. When we talk about expanding tree canopy and, you know, expanding forests in the Annapolis area, we are a urban city. I don't get why, we are not Davinsonville. This is not the suburbs. We can't have 10 acres of trees. Because part of the issue is, even with constituency, with this tree-for-tree stuff, it's expensive. You have, you know, private constituents going out to hire these private tree companies to take down and then to add a tree. It's just too much. And so, I think that we have to look at some of the ideas like DC. I keep bringing this up, urban, what do they call it? You can even get a major in this. This is urban, urban green, or green urban development or something like that, where we talk about using rooftop areas and alternative sites for growth in regards to the environment so that we can use our land for some of the things that we actually need, like road and infrastructure in regards to housing and stores and stuff like that. And speaking of infrastructure and transportation, you spent a significant amount of time talking about the biking system, and you showed that unique map where it was, you know, broken up and all of that stuff. And I understand the need for a biking system, I really do. But I don't think all or a majority of our financial resources should be going to supporting that sort of infrastructure. I'm not, you know, the city of Annapolis doesn't produce jobs. We don't produce careers. In order to get something like that, you have to go to DC, Baltimore, or outside of the county. I'm not getting on my bike from Eastport, riding all the way out to the county or riding. We need to be investing our dollars and our transportation dollars into legitimate transportation, as Alderman Savage mentioned, with growth, growth comes more peoples, comes more congestion. Everybody's not riding a bike around. You know, people want to be able to pay the fare to get on the bus to get to DC or get to where they need to go to make a living. And so, you know, we've been caught up on this bike thing for like the last four years, and we have not invested the equal amount of time and attention into, you know, like legitimate urban transportation in regards to whether it be buses, train systems. Obviously, I'm just speaking in regards to what's available, but we just haven't looked at those things. And so, I remember the last time we talked, you said that you would work with the Transportation Department to add some of those pieces. I know you mentioned it in goal number six at the end, very briefly, but add some of those pieces to the goals. I think it was goal number six. And then lastly, to the point that Alderman Shandermeyer made, housing obviously is just important. And I think the misconception is that if we build, we will grow. I think that if we build, it'll just fill up because what we have right now is situations where you have people cramming, you know, two, three, four neighbors or families into, you know, these multi-family, I'm sorry, yeah, the multi-family developments that we do have. It's filled to capacity. You know, we can't cram another family into Watergate, Admiral Farragut, what's the one over? I'm blanking on the one off the Spa, but that's, I mean, just so much of the congestion is there. Have you ever sat on the school bus behind Hilltop Lane, right next to Pittmore, and watched as 90 kids get off the bus? I mean, like, that's where the congestion is. And I think that building space where families can grow is just so important. And I also would like to see something added in regards to the Spa Road facility. I believe the city owns that, and what is our plan for that over the next couple of years? Obviously, we'd like to see affordable housing placed there along the two sides where the Public Works facility used to be, but the surrounding area. I mean, that'd be great for a central park in the city. I mean, it's a massive amount of land. There already is the infrastructure that exists that can be redeveloped to make, you know, better paths and bike trails. I think, you know, looking there is also key and could be helpful, too.
Great point. I just want to say that we're going to be treating the Spa Roads as one of the case studies for the Comp Plan, and so, we're going to be launching a website as part of our Comp Plan that'll allow people to chime in on the use of that site. And we have a consultant that's kind of working out some ideas for that, but it won't be a, it won't be a final plan for the site, but we want the Comp Plan to provide some recommendation on what might make sense, given its context, so.
I do have, I did have one last question. I'm sorry. In regards to, in regards to the structure of planning and zoning, and I believe I asked this previously at the last meeting when you all presented. I'll use the example of the water access, but there are several other examples, especially in regards to housing and growth and density, and an example like that. If the council creates policy or the administration creates policy that we'd like to see water access, or we'd like to see, you know, growth and multi-family development, and that is then passed down to the Director of Planning and Zoning to implement within her, her or his, but right now, her, her staff. Is, how do you measure that, you know, maybe in a year? Do you go back and say, okay, they asked for water access, we provided access in X, Y, and Z? Or is there communication amongst the staff in regards to, if this is the policy, this should be the timeline on what we, on how we achieve these goals? And including public, you know, participation and stuff like that? How is that, you know, how does the Planning Office run in regards to implementing policy and ideas that the council puts forward?
Alderman Gay, I would say typically now what we do is we respond by producing an ordinance that we then have to enact and follow it in the code. But Eric, could you go towards the end where you're showing some of the performance measures?
Yeah.
Because what we're proposing here is a way we can give you more feedback in a construct kind of way where every year we'll be showing you these goals, these performance metrics and actions, and what we've done to show you how we've progressed to that goal. So, these, these goals need to be your goals. You know, we want them to be your goals. If they're not, we will change them. But that way, every year, we're telling you, this is what we did to meet this goal. And it, you know, might just be moving the needle, but at least there'll be some way to show you, we are working on this every day to get these policies on the ground.
Yeah, the metrics are huge. I mean, it's, it's really, you know, you hit it on the head. I mean, it's impossible for us to, to kind of measure our impact unless we have something to measure against. And so, you know, we're in the process of, you know, obviously, what we shared today needs refinement, but we started, wanted to start getting metrics and seeing how the recommendations would kind of fit within these goals. You know, so even if the goals get refined, we think a lot of what we're doing now isn't for waste, but we're sort of trying to figure this out right now. And we do a report every year also, in between Comp Plans. We kind of, we do an annual kind of study, kind of look at what we've done over the last year. So, that's also part of it.
The state requires this report, but right now, it's not a very good tool to really show our progress on these kinds of policies. So, we want to reshape it through this process. And what we're planning to do, if you all are on board and game, I know budget's coming up, is, as Eric mentioned, break this down into different subjects based on the committees. Come to each committee, and then we'll be able to spend more time on the goals and even start going through the performance measures and recommend actions for the committee that you're on. That way, you know, we'll have a little bit more time to go into depths, if you like that approach. That's what we're proposing. We also give an update to Planning Commission every month, just so you're aware of that as well.
Thank you, Alderman Arnett, and then Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank Dr. Nash for those last statements because it makes me feel a little bit better about this meeting. I have to tell you, after the last presentation, I felt very invigorated and optimistic. And I must confess, with this presentation, I feel frustrated. I agree with Alderman Savage. It really would have been nice to have had this information in advance. There are a lot of goals that have been asserted here, but I don't feel like I've been given ownership of those yet. And Dr. Nash, maybe when we work in the community, the committees, going through the goals, we can start to develop some ownership. So, that is a real frustration, and these are pretty fundamental things. Eric, if I can ask you to go back to the missing middle slide. But while we're getting there, I will tell you that one of, I was writing as quickly as I could as these things flash by, statements that frankly drive me crazy. And one of them was activate underutilized resources. That does not have any meaning to me. Another one was equity-driven approach to improving water quality. Equity-driven. So, I think there's a lot of phrases in here that, you know, I'm having a hard time quite understanding what we're communicating. I would point out on this particular slide that if you look at this slide versus the slide that shows the existing communities in the city, the existing city is one that is largely the things you're showing on the left, which are the single-family dwellings. And there's almost, it seems to me, a bias that's shown here of where you think we should go. And I would say, that's not where our constituents are thinking we should go, and that's going to be a big problem. I understand that Dewan and Brooks don't own their own home yet and therefore might not be invested in the left-hand side of this diagram. But there are an awful lot of people who do own a home, and there's an awful lot of people that are feeling uncomfortable about the missing middle being such a huge portion of the city. So, I think there's going to have to be an awful lot of dialogue, again, as Alderman Gay said, about what we mean by growth and how we're going to accomplish that. But I would conclude by saying, I think this council has to get a sense of ownership in the Comp Plan. We see what happened with the Forest Drive Esports Sector Study, and I think that we need to work a lot harder over the next few months, even with the budget. And by the way, I think the budget is actually largely under control, so I'm hopeful we're going to have plenty of time to meet with you on these in the committees. But I would really like, I'd like to get a lot more discussion amongst us about all of these goals. And there were a huge number of them presented today. They're all very important. And again, as I say, it's clear that a lot of work and effort and thinking has not only gone into developing those, but to coordinate a lot of work that's been done in the past, the thinking about the water quality, bringing in the bicycle lanes, bringing in the, we should bring in the sidewalk plans and the trail plans, all of those things. The things that get developed sit on a shelf. Because I don't want this Comp Plan to be something that we do, it goes on a shelf. Developers pull it down to show what part of the Comp Plan supports their development. But by and large, it doesn't have a lot of meaning to most of the residents in the city, and it doesn't sit, the goals from the Comp Plan don't sit on our desk at City Council. And, you know, the last Comp Plan had three goals. This one's going to have a whole heck of a lot more. But I want those to be on our desk, at our dais at City Council. So, when we're discussing legislation, we're actually having the Comp Plan in our mind and thinking about how the work we're doing on legislation correlates with all of the effort that went into this Comp Plan. And it has a lot more meaning and frankly, ownership on our part than particularly, than past Comp Plans have had. So, thank you, Dr. Nash. I think bringing these goals to the respective committees is a very good idea, and it'll make me feel a lot more comfortable. So, I'm looking forward to that.
Okay, I will start scheduling that. That will be great. And we still have plenty of time, so, you know, if the schedule slips, the schedule slips. So, we don't want to rush it because we want you all to be proud of this. And like you said, Alderman Arnett, we want this to be on your desk if we print, if printing things out is still a thing.
Okay, it'll be in our views, our, what do you call those things?
It'll be a bookmark on your computer.
Right.
Alderman Turner?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Nash and Eric. You put the comprehensive into comprehensive, amazing, amazing effort here. And you know how much I rely on the comprehensive plan, you know, almost to a fault because of probably my background. You know, I look at it as a spec book, you know? So, I applaud the effort and I look forward to its implementation. Mike, I don't know if this is a question. I tried to rephrase it into a question, so forgive me if it's just a comment. I'd like to go back to the open space equity slide. I'd like to drill down to that, to open space equity and why it's so important. I think it's really important that the comprehensive plan is the leader in our path forward as far as open space equity. And that is, you know, defining our public access from both the land and the water. And to do that, we need a solid inventory of public parks and public spaces at the edge of the water, which I do not believe we have. I digress. I went, I had a meeting last night on a Cheston Street bulkhead, and I could not find if that was public property or not. And so, I think that you're kind of morphing a lot of things here with the open space equity. equity, but I think we really have to differentiate between public, and when I say public, I mean for the public spaces and, and our parks. Now I hear that when I asked for parks to be mapped at one point, I heard that they, that that was done by the county and we couldn't do it. So I wasn't quite sure what that was all about. But the reason why it has to be, I think, I believe that the comp plan has to be the leader in this is that we need to evaluate, you know, what is our overall capacity, you know, for, for kayaks and small vessels? I'm, I'm saying we need a master plan to, to equitably apply the uses for small craft throughout. Because I believe the problem is not shortage, it's just that they have defaulted, and this is an important point, without doing that, those spaces are, they default into being territorial and, and they're not used for the betterment of all. We do, you know, we, of course we rely on, on our, on the neighbors to, 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 to ask, you know, what, you know, for outreach, et cetera. But I think that's a city decision on, 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 on implementing that social equity. If we rely on, on just, just that, that small area, it, it does become territorial and then, you know, you know, they don't want the parking and all justifiable things. So, so I just think that I really am relying on the comprehensive plan to, to, to take leadership of this. And, and, and so we know what we're dealing with and we have a clear inventory of what we have. So again, we can have equitable use. A lot of our grants rely, you know, that we get DNR grants because they are for public access. They're not just for residential use. So I really think we need your plan and conversation with Parks and Recs and the Harbor Master to really, you know, go forward on this. But thank you so much and I really appreciate the, the effort on the historic district. Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. Did anybody else have some comments? Alderman Shandelmeyer.
Could you email this to us just for our own references?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I should say, it, it would be perfectly helpful if you get the PDF and you could just mark up the goals and, and I mean, that would be a, I mean, we're going to kind of look at this stuff at the committee level, but we'll, we'll take feedback that way as well. I mean, I, the point about sending it in advance is definitely well received. I mean, I, I recognize how hard it is to, to, to absorb all of this right now. So I, I hope you can digest it over the weekend, in the coming weeks, but.
Thank you so much. Can I just clarify something? In the last 10 years, there've been 46, 465 permits, only 465 permits for, was that single family and only 120 for multifamily in, in the last 10 years?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, 10 years.
But that's, I think that's a very misleading statistic. Aren't most of those 465 for permits to do work on an existing single family? Is that, you're not saying there's 465 new single family units, are you?
No, but both of those numbers include renovations because it includes all of O'bury Court as well, which it wasn't new units. It was, so we tried to make the metrics the same, but they're net new and substantial renovations.
So, so O'bury Court would be one of those 400, one of those 120, but it has multiple units in it. Okay. Can you break that number out in actual units? Cause I think that'd be an interesting number.
No, I think that is actual units.
Yeah, these are units.
But new versus old, you know, it's implied that there's 465 new units, there's not, and that there's only 125 units in the multifamily. There's multiple units in the 120 multifamily. But as you said, Dr. Nash, those not, most of those are not new. That's redoing existing multifamily. So it'd really be interesting to know what are the number of new units of, of various kinds, single family.
We, we can, that's easy. We, we put that in our annual report to the state, the net, net new. So we, we don't count, you know, major renovations. And it's usually in the 50 to 60 new dwelling units a year. Although I don't, I don't know if we break those down by multifamily or single family, but it's probably not too hard.
So 50 to 60?
Dr. Nash, I think it's 150 combined, O'bury Court and Eastport Tech, I mean, O'bury Court and College Creek Terrace. I think it's 150 combined between those two communities.
Okay, we, we can drill down on this a bit more when we come to committee meetings.
Okay. Well, thank you. It's going to be an interesting journey for us all here, I can see already.
Yep. Fasten your seatbelts.
Well, the county started their plan at the same time we did and now they're in the final adoption phase.
I know, but their plan isn't as good as ours.
Well, right, yes.
Yes. Better than they are. Alderman Pion has his hand up.
I move the rear chair.
All right.
Thank you all.
Can I get a second on that?
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to say a big thank you to your efforts, guys. We truly appreciate your hard work that you're doing. Thank you for delivering this.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.